Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council meeting for the City of International Falls for Monday, June the 5th, 2017. I would ask all to please arise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
My pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I ask the City Administrator to note the roll call with all members of the council present. Move to the agenda, and there are two additions for consideration, Items Nine and Ten under New Business. Number Nine is Joint Powers Agreement with Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, and the Number Ten is an agreement to use the city's Icebox of the Nation trademark with Williamson Dickey. You can hear about both of those if we decide to add those to the agenda.
Is this Simon?
Oh, that's the under audience.
Okay.
I would make the motion to accept the agenda with the two additions.
Motion by Counsel Drowba to approve the agenda with the additions.
Second.
Second by Counsel Jaxson. Discussion on the motion or the agenda. Anyon question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, agenda is approved with the additions. Thank you. Move to the minutes of the May 15, 2017, regular City Council meeting.
Move on the minutes.
Motion by Counsel Drowba to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Second by Counsel Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the minutes. Anyon question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and minutes are approved. Thank you. We'll go to the resolution on transfers and payment of claims. On transfers, we have to the General Fund, number 101, from the Lodging Tax Fund, number 812, $281.99. And in the accounts payable claims, the City of International Falls' regular claims of Airport commission claims of $16,188.23. And then the terminal project claims at the airport, $1,017,998.98.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve those claims.
We have a motion by Counsel Jaxson to adopt the resolution and approve the transfer and payment of claims.
Second.
Second by Counsel Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the resolution. Any of the claims. I just have one, and I failed to ask the administrative office today, and maybe City Administrator, you can hopefully enlighten us. Under a number of places, and I'll just take an example, on page number four, talks about a reissue of clothing. Again, on page five, there's another reissue. I just threw out the, there was just quite a few reissues, and I don't know if there was something, even like to the cemetery on page 11, there's a reissue. Was there some problem with?
These are checks reissued, are they not?
I assume so, but I don't know.
I don't want to necessarily speak to that, just given that we did the transition to the new Clarity software system. I don't know, unless Lisa, do you? Can you offer any insights into that? Because I don't know for certain without verifying.
You may have the answer there.
I think there was a transition from the old Casell Classic system to the Clarity system, and there perhaps was some crossover issues with that. But I can verify that, and I'll send an email to the council and let you know what the basis for that was.
I should have checked with administration earlier, and I didn't. Further discussion on the motion or the resolution. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, motion is carried, resolution is approved, and as is the transfer and the payment of claims. Thank you. We'll move to the audience. Is anyone in the audience that has something to bring to the attention of the council that's not on the agenda? John?
My name is John Borson. I did have a taxi cab service, taxi van service, but September last year, I just kind of pulled it down to find out if I could catch it off the top of my head. I'm trying to start up again under John's Ice and Fire Taxi and Van Service. I'm getting a lot of static from City Care about it. I had the decal on, and somebody called in already and complained about it. A man owns a dent shop, he put them on because he couldn't be out of town for a couple weeks. I'm not hoping anybody will tell you. You can offer a date from the city. I gotta make it so I can make it into me, and you know, I don't have any extra help. Nobody wants to work.
John, if I understand it, you're applying for a license for taxi and van service?
Yes, under the name of John Ice and Fire Taxi and Van Service.
Very good. And you're going to have two vehicles, as I understand it?
As of now.
Okay. And so you have submitted the fee for the licenses?
I've done all that.
Very good. Okay. Counsel's pleasure with.
I'll move to approve the license application.
Motion by Counsel Jaxson to approve the taxi and van service license for Mr. John Borson as John's Ice and Fire Taxi and Van Service. Second by Counsel Briggs. Discussion on the motion or the license.
Question with the taxi, sir. Not objecting, trying to understand, is there any limitations on the geography or the area of coverage when they get a license from International Falls, or how does that work?
They're able to, as long as they're licensed, they can go into Canada, and they can go anywhere in Minnesota.
Well, I have like a four mile radius on my stuff, because that gives you down to Minneapolis, which is about 300 miles. And even more, far north is really contrary.
Yeah, I'm not saying there shouldn't be, I'm trying to figure out where the area is.
As long as they're licensed, they can go into Canada and any states.
So Virginia could have a taxi cab license, and they could come up here if they wanted to?
No, no, they could not originate. They could drive someone up here.
They could drive someone up there, right?
But they couldn't originate from here and go somewhere. That's what the license approves them to have a origination here.
How about around there?
No problem.
If you ever take somebody down and bring them back, that's possible.
Thank you.
Other questions or discussions with regard to the approval of the license? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll vote yes, motion is carried, license is approved. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Move to, is anyone else in the audience that has something to bring the attention of the council? Not there be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Move to the public hearing, and we have the first reading of the ordinance of the Fifth Series, an ordinance regulating the off-sale intoxicating liquor sales on Sunday, and amending Chapter Five, Liquor, Wine, and Beer Licensing and Regulations in the Code of City Ordinance. Please.
I may make a few introductory comments. The Legislation and Land Use Committee met this afternoon, reviewed, had made some modifications, which I think are different than what you have in the version that was included in the packet. We attempted to make those revisions this afternoon and then print out a clean copy, and I see from the copy that was copied for me, it still has amendments shown in here, and some of the corrections do not include the corrections that we made, so I hesitate to pass that version out this evening. I think if there's specific questions regarding the ordinance, I think any one of the committee members, the city attorney or myself, can help respond to those. But essentially, what this is, is it's an ordinance to try and revise our liquor license ordinance, and so we're repealing all of the existing chapters dealing with alcohol sales, and we're using as a model ordinance, the League of Minnesota Cities Model Ordinance, but we've made some amendments to allow the Sunday liquor sales, off-sale Sundays liquor sales. The state law was changed, and it's effective on July 1st, and it allows Sunday liquor sales, off-sale between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00 p.m., 11:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. And so that provision is included in this new ordinance, but we've made some other minor modifications to the League Model Ordinance.
Maybe, so that we have it properly before the council, could we have a motion to, and second, to have the first reading of the ordinance, and then let's get into some of the details of the ordinance?
So move.
Motion by Counsel Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counsel Jaxson to have the first reading of the ordinance. Back to the City Administrator. Who wants to lead, or City Attorney, who wants to lead the discussion, or they going through the sections, and give us an idea of some of the changes you might have?
Well, I don't have the benefit of having the latest revisions that Ken made and has copies of, but I can give them.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if we're going to go through it section by section, I will distribute the section that we have here. I think, just because we had very immediately looked at this, I think it will trigger, the city attorney and the committee members are going to have to insert some corrections, which are not reflected on here, and I apologize for that. I actually used my staff, because I think there are two copies, and I see the copy that they printed also includes some corrections, but it doesn't include all of them, so.
That's some of the.
Briefly, while.
So we can get this first reading done tonight or not, do you think?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I have a couple preliminary questions, if I may, just to put this.
Counsel Jaxson.
How many liquor licenses can we issue? It doesn't state in the copy I got. We have 11, I thought, that we, up to 11, or do you know? Just for point of information, I think we're limited, but I think it was.
Seven on.
Seven? Not 11.
On sale, yes.
Seven on sale.
Off-sale, there is no limit?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Then, the maximum fee that we can charge, I know we're way under, but it would be illuminating for me to know, anyway, what the maximum fee the state is, the state allows, just for future.
And this particular ordinance references not to exceed fees in the League Model Ordinance. I presume those are based on what's in state statute, and the applicable Minnesota state statute is Chapter 340A, and those should be referenced in there. What I also distributed to the council just before the meeting was a copy of our liquor licenses, as well as some other licenses, and an existing fee schedule, and it was my understanding from staff is that the council had revised these back in 2013, and actually had reduced the fees significantly over what they were previously, but I couldn't tell you what those fees are. It predates my being with the city, so that is the most current fee schedule, and at the top of the page, it shows what the liquor license fees are.
And with the revision, November 2010, you say there's been a further revision, that these are?
The estimate, staff indicated they thought it was 2013, but the current fee schedule is the one that you have there in front of you, and so if it's dated 10, that's the date that it was last changed.
Thank you.
I recall the discussion when we voted to do that, reduce the fees. I did vote to do that, too.
I believe the old on-sale fee was $2,500, but I don't.
No.
I don't know.
Your question was, what is the maximum for on-sale?
I didn't think the maximum was listed everywhere. I wanted to make comparison between what our maximum is and what we're charging, and I know it doesn't directly pertain to whether we're going to approve this tonight or not. However, we're looking at a budget meeting coming up soon, and that kind of information might be relevant to us down the road.
We didn't have maximum listed in our ordinance, and it only states that it goes to a maximum of what the state allows. Some of our fees were 240, 300 that are listed in there.
We don't need that information tonight. Yeah.
I think the only maximum that's in the ordinance that I seek is the off-sale liquor license. The maximum is 240, or a greater amount if it's permitted by statute. And ours looks like it's currently 150.
Yeah.
So we're less than the maximum there, and there are maxims that have been established by state regulations.
And you certainly don't want to put them in the ordinance itself specifically, because then you have to change it.
Right. The decision that the community made was that it's better not to have the exact fees in the ordinance, rather than you have to change your ordinance, which is more difficult than just establish. I can go through, Mr. Mayor, if you want, and take this copy that Ken gave us, and point out the areas that I believe should be different.
Thank you.
And just going through, and before I do that, I would just point out, number five, Section Five, has been eliminated altogether. We would just save that section for future use. The Model Ordinance for the state, or for the League of Minnesota Cities, prohibits any consumption in a public place, and the committee thought that was too restrictive. We don't have such a restriction now, and establishing things that are more restrictive than what we currently.
And that would impact the bass fishing, certainly.
Well, that gets licensed, you know, we issued a temporary license, and that's in Smoky Bear Park, so that may not be involved. I think it would be implied with any temporary license or outdoor activity you have, that consumption is acceptable. But what this would really be geared for, let's just say somebody was at the Alex Club and had a bottle of beer, and walked with their beer down to the Viking. Okay, if you prohibited any alcohol in a public place, and there are some cities that do that, that you cannot have alcohol in a public street or sidewalk or anything else. And the committee thought that we didn't want to be that restrictive in International Falls, because we have not been in the past. There wasn't any restriction like that in our earlier ordinance. And then, next, I think, big, Section 18, and that's in here, our current ordinance and the Model Ordinance for the League of Minnesota Cities limits an individual to only, there will be only be one license in the city to the same, but that increasing that to two, and something that the council discussed a while back, because at one point, the Viking bar owners were considered about going out to the spot and buying that and having two places, and we just didn't see worthwhile public purpose in limiting a person to not more than one. So we thought two, you know, that way there is some restriction, you're not going to have the same person owning every bar in town, but it wouldn't be limited to one. If somebody, you know, wants to open a new bar or a liquor store, and they've already got one, hey, I don't think we want to stand in their way. So, that was the thinking there. Down in E of Section 18, we added the clarification, you'll see it in blue, building, there's a restriction, you can't be within 500 feet of a church, and we wanted to make it clear that the measuring point was from the church building, not necessarily the church property lines, because there may be one or two situations in the city where, from the edge of the property, there might be some that are a little bit closer than 500 feet right now, and we didn't want to do anything that was going to make somebody that currently had a license out of compliance.
My question on that is, is a church building like a parsonage? That wouldn't be necessarily the church, a parsonage that would be somewhere else? Would that be a church building or no?
I think a parsonage would be a, if the parsonage is on the church property, you know, if it just happened to be a minister living someplace, and that was paid for by the church, this wouldn't restrict, there wouldn't be any restriction there. It would be, I think it's intended to be the church itself, where people would come, it's a place of worship, and where people would come to worship. We don't want within 500 feet of that worship place, any liquor establishments. The, go to Section 20. There you'll see, in currently, in our current ordinance, we have that nobody can consume after the closing time of 1:00. Nobody, even though they bought it before 1:00, they can't consume it any longer than 20 minutes after 1:00. And by 20 minutes after, the bar employees need to clear off the drinks from the tables. But then we went to 30 minutes on number D, where you can, as long as there's no alcohol in front of you, and you're not consuming alcohol, you could stay on premises an extra 10 minutes. So by 1:30, if you weren't an employee of the business, you'd need to be out of the bar. The Model Ordinance for the League had 30 minutes for all three of those situations, but since we had 20, 20, and 30 now in our current ordinance, and we suspected, although I don't think we talked to any bar owners, that they would like to be done, they don't want to have to be working after 1:00, so we didn't want to add extra time there. So that's the thinking behind the change in the minutes there. 21, you'll see in blue there under B, the Model Ordinance just means illegal for any person under 21 to enter an establishment. There's alcohol, if it wasn't a restaurant, and couldn't attend social functions there. But we added the caveat, unless accompanied by a parent or responsible person of legal age, because we think it's fairly common. You know, I know I've gone into bars, and my grandkids with me, and they're not drinking, but you know, under this Model Ordinance, if you didn't have that exception, it conceivably would be a violation of the ordinance. So as long as they're with a parent or responsible adult of legal age, a person underage can Where I think we've got a change that didn't show up is Section 23, which is just lower on that page, the council shall, and we have shall crossed off twice, and then it'll read "may," so the final version will be, the council may either suspend. The Model Ordinance had mandatory suspensions and revocations, and we really thought that there would, it'd be better to allow some discretion with the council, because there are some violations that you're really not going to want to revoke or suspend a license. For instance, just the past month or two, there's been, lack of a better term, maybe a sting operation that's been put on through a grant that the college has, where underage people have gone into liquor establishments and bars and attempted to buy. And we actually, I'm aware of five, and the chief could correct me if I'm wrong, I'm aware of five, not all within the city, I think maybe three were within the city and a couple were in the county, where illegal sales were made. And those people have all been prosecuted, they've all pled guilty, they all got the same treatment with the main, required to, one, they're on probation, and two, they are required to attend training on how to properly serve and card and CIDs. But if we didn't have "may" in here, the owners of those establishments, their liquor licenses would be suspended for a period of time, and it really, I think, would be a sanction far more serious than what the council would want to do. I mean, the council, you still have the ability, you could bring those, those that were licensed in the city, and you know, notify them that, you know, we're going to have a hearing, and we're going to consider additional sanctions beyond what the court did. I mean, that's an option that the City Council has, but by this language, we make it optional. We don't have mandatory sanctions, whether it be fines or suspensions of license. We have some recommended ones, but nothing that's mandatory.
Can I interrupt just?
You may.
I thought there was a requirement under state law that anybody applying for a liquor license has to have their staff go through training, and we need proof of that training.
Within 90 days, and that's in our ordinance, too, that they're supposed to go through this training within 90 days.
But just once, upon application?
Well, upon hiring, I mean, when you hire any new staff, they're to be trained.
Okay.
And I think that's one area where the bars have kind of fallen down, and maybe haven't, because they're required to do that for their gram shop insurance, and you know, I mean, there are a number of entities that require that training. And I think some of the five individuals that did the illegal sale had had training, but I think a couple of them had not. I don't think they were so new that they wouldn't have met the 90-day requirement, but one of the things that has kind of slipped through the cracks a little bit. And so in 23, basically, all the changes we made there, we wanted it to be "may" rather than "now," with the exception if there is a license suspension, the council shall select the dates of the suspension. And then on page 11, under C, one area where there is mandatory enforcement is if they don't provide required proof of financial responsibility and gram shop insurance, then their license is automatically suspended. And it's worded such that if they get a notice of cancellation from their insurance carrier, that suspends their liquor license without the council taking any additional action. That's really the one area where there's a mandatory penalty. It's not something that has to come before the council. Back before the council, and I, I'm not sure, Ken, I know we ran into this incident once before, where liquor liability insurance had lapsed, and they lost their ability to have their license for a period of time. License, I mean, we didn't come back before.
Correct.
And Section 24 just says, we're, and in the heading, we should add Section Five, but Sections Five and 24 to 29 are reserved for future use, and then we're just removing all of 25, because they applied to municipal liquor stores, and since we don't have any of that in International Falls, we took those out. And then the, in Section 30, if you go to page 13, we. And then the, in section 30, if you go to page 13, we changed some things there too. If you go to the last sentence of B, we had some minimum penalties, and we've stricken the word minimum and made it recommended. And then rather than penalties must be imposed, those penalties may be imposed. So again, we're giving the council the discretion to do something different than the recommended penalty. And that, that's all of it. And then behind that, we have the official summary of the ordinance, which is what would be actually published in the newspaper. And again, like section 5 where it's stricken, that would not appear. That's what has to be placed in the paper.
When does this go into effect?
After a second reading. Tonight's the first reading, so two weeks from now would be the second reading.
July 1.
And then there's a pub, so that's the, that's the goal, is to make it effective July 1st. That's when the new state Sunday liquor is effective. The thought was, just place the whole ordinance right and just address the Sunday liquor.
Thank you.
Further discussions or questions with regard to the first reading of the ordinance?
Thank you for the work that went into this. Attention to detail, all of that. It's so much fun, right?
I have one question.
Counsel Drowe.
On page 13, I guess essentially it's section 30 under penalties. The section B that we crossed out, minimum and must, doesn't it make more sense to leave that in, rather than being recommended, but the, leave the schedule? Because then it's not at the will of the council for these additional things. Because we have people that'll come up here and be like, well, you know, it is my first fine. And then it comes up to a judgment call on us. And the reality is, it gets harder and harder for us to go a case-by-case basis on stuff like this. And this is, this is financial, this isn't closing your doors or anything like that. And I, I think we should just leave it in for the first violation for three years for 500. But I know that this went through the committee earlier, and I'll accept the recommendations of our committee. But I just think that it's easier to have set penalties rather than discretionary penalties. But I'll accept the discretion of the...
There's no question it's easier. Is it more fair? The thinking was, is that there may be circumstances under which that seems excessive. You know, not happy, but... Question that if it, if it was a minimum, but again, minimum, it really would need to, somebody would need to determine, should it be more than the minimum? So, you know, I think there's potentially council involvement either way, but...
I'm sympathetic with your view.
Well, and to my credit, I think I'm the only one here that's owned a bar.
Anytime it's discretion, then we become subject to political, you know. That's why we get the big bucks, right? But, yeah, I understand what you're saying, Counsel Drowe, I have some sympathy for it. But I guess, I feel that discretion is really why we're here, so I think it's okay to leave it as it is.
Please. Based on the earlier question about the effective date, I think it would probably be appropriate, but I'll defer to the city attorney, that there be an affirmative statement here that says it's actually effective on July 1st. I think the current language says it's effective upon publication. And the Sunday liquor provisions couldn't be effective until July 1st. So perhaps it'd be appropriate for the whole ordinance to become effective on July 1st? Counsel is okay with that?
To add that into the statement on the resolution.
Right, the final section.
I would take that recommendation from the city administrator, amend the resolution.
All right, the first reading of the ordinance then would have the effective date of July 1st of 2017. Is there anything further to consider, any amendments to the ordinance? If we're done, then we'll have the vote on the first reading of the ordinance that will be effective July the 1st of 2017.
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried, and the first ordinance is to have its first reading and has passed. Under public hearing, the second item is the first reading of the contract ordinance to award the bid for 15th Street from Industrial Avenue to Trunk Highway 53. And that's the reconstruction of that with Batumana surfacing. That's to be done by Bowman Asphalt Products Incorporated at a cost of $257,819. This is from the Fund 207, the Municipal State Aid Street Fund. Your pleasure with that, first reading of that ordinance. Motion by Counsel Briggs.
Second.
Second by Counsel Drowe. Discussion on the motion or the ordinance? Question.
Aye.
Aye.
A vote yes, motion is carried, and first reading of the ordinance is approved. Thank you. Go to the opening of bids, and we have the low quote from the Grand Forks Fire Equipment to outfit 32 firefighters with a jacket and pants turnout gear at the cost of $58,240. This is to come from the Fire Department's Capital Outlay Fund, number 402. Chief?
As the proposal says here, we do have 10 firefighters with non-compliant gear. We're in the process shortly here in the agenda. If we add seven more firefighters, and then next year we'll have about six more whose gear becomes non-compliant. So I'm proposing to do the whole fire department at this point in time, that'd be 32 sets. We got the competitive bids, again, you can see the difference there. The only amendment I would like to make is possibly to make it read not to exceed $59,000 even, which I think would be more than enough. And the only reason I state that is, when I was going through the bids here just this week, I noticed one little error in the Grand Forks bid, and that was they didn't have a nameplate on the back. He was gonna get back to me on a price on that, he estimated it at $30 a set. That's what the $58,240 represents, would be the additional $30 per set. Even $58,500 would probably cover it, just to make sure we're not in any error there. I anticipate the $58,240 to be accurate, but maybe reword it as a not-to-exceed price, just to be fair on that. It is still a low bid by far compared to the other ones. Again, beneficial to do the whole department all at once. So the NFPA complacency is that you can't have a set of gear, no matter its condition, older than 10 years old. This is the second revision cycle of that NFPA standard. So it comes into effect now that it's basically a set deal for NFPA. So every 10 years would be a recycle, or a reinstitute phase, and what most fire departments are doing, and what I'm looking to do is every five years, buying a new set of gear, so that on the five-year cycle, the new set becomes the first out set, the five-year-old set becomes the backup gear. And then every five years, you're replacing and cycling down. That's where we're at. And then on the end here, we did have some discussion with Administrator Anderson on the boots, hoods, gloves, and helmets. I guess I'm open for discussion on that. I had originally wanted to not go through a bid process, but I think we are bound to do so after talking to the administrator. Some of those items would have been a direct buy from a vendor for various reasons, but we can look at that in addition. The bid or quote is just for pants and jackets, so that's what we're looking at.
Page, we have a motion then to accept the low quote and that they would not exceed $59,000?
I would make that motion.
Motion by Counsel Drowe.
Second.
Second by Counsel Jacksaw. Discussion, questions for Chief, please.
I have one discussion. What is the regulatory agency that determines that we only have 10, 10 calendar years to use equipment?
NFPA, this falls under multiple things. So NFPA is a National Fire Protection Association, so they're the ones that dictate that standard. Who would actually enforce it would be an OSHA Institute, for example. If Minnesota OSHA came in, or we had a complaint filed with OSHA, that's what they would cite on their thing, would be the NFPA. So the helmets fall under OSHA, not necessarily NFPA. All hard hats are, depending on the thing, five to seven years, depending on their ANSI or, I can't remember the other standard there. There's NFPA, ANSI, and OSHA compliance, so depending on their standard, would be their year set. Truth be told, I'm not very much in favor of that standard, but it's one we have to play by, so...
And I'm not either. And I think my concern is, what is the standard of a good fire department? Good training and going through the school districts and making sure that we don't have fires to begin with? So you're being penalized by not having any fires in your community. If we have five fires in a 10-year period, or 10, 10 fires in a 10-year period, it's not getting the same use as fire departments in Minneapolis, St. Paul, bigger cities, that they're going out every day. We're not getting nearly the use out of our gear as these bigger cities are, but yet we're being held to the same standards of these cities that are using the equipment every day, day in, day out. We probably are getting, what, 5%, 10% of the use out of our equipment over that period as these bigger...
We might be getting a little more than that, but I do agree with you and disagree with the standard. But again, that's not our position to, we have to live by the rules. That was a highly contested item here not too long ago. That's again why this, so the way NFPA works, it's kind of like your first and second readings for liquor ordinance. NFPA puts out an ordinance, it gets revisited in a five-year cycle, and it's after the second reading of the ordinance, or the second cycle, that it becomes law, in lack of a better word, and enforceable. So this was highly contested, and they had a meeting in Chicago, Illinois, in 2013, I believe it was. It was a highly contested debate, and it just stuck, so... And again, with the cancer initiative and stuff like that, they're finding with the gear that even depending on the use and the washing and everything else, that the materials degrade, so we do get some permeability issues, even though they may look good, they do degrade over time with exposures to... I was educated on this as well, not just heat, but cold. So our firefighters keep our gear and our vehicles at home. I mean, in the wintertime, I think most of the guys bring their gear in their house to stay warm. But there is a cold limit too as well, so we exceed that cold limit sometimes too. So we're degrading fabrics on both ends of the spectrum.
As you brought up, this is gonna be something we're gonna be looking at every five years as another, as another additional fee for the budget.
If we do it correctly, that would be my, I would, in my opinion, correctly. We did hand out, if you guys remember, I did hand out a flyer here a couple months ago, and they talked about the cost of outfitting firefighters. And what a lot of the departments, their pitch, in lack of a better word, to their city councils is it's $500 a year per firefighter for gear. So if you get on that rotation, if you're budgeting $500 per firefighter per year, you should be putting that money aside and getting that gear out.
Eric, please.
One other point I would just reemphasize that was discussed is, I think the principal reason for this is the apparent science that, or results that firefighters are at increased risk of cancer. So by changing over the turnout gear every 10 years, it's supposedly trying to limit their exposure to the carcinogens in the turnout gear that can't be cleaned out over time. But you're right, the more use you get, the more calls you go on, the likelihood that you're gonna be, have more exposure to higher levels of carcinogens than we would if we don't use it as often as a bigger department. But they had to set a standard, and so that standard's been set at 10 years.
Couldn't they have two standards, one for big cities, one for little cities, huh?
I just think it should be, I mean, just my thoughts is, it should be regulated to test the gear. I mean, if, I don't know if that's someone's job, if that would be a job or not, but someone to go to a department and check the gear. We have people come to our department and check our trucks, check everything else about what we're doing. It seems like one more thing that we could have tested our equipment, rather than putting it on a timeframe, but that's a whole different animal.
I guess ultimately, and I understand your good questions, ultimately, 500 a year to say, to ensure that our firefighters are safe from chemicals is something, I guess, I would accept, rather than risk, you know.
Are there further questions or discussion? And not to, with regard to this motion, but to your item in the presentation that you've made, you're gonna be seeking quotes for the boots, hoods, gloves, and helmets, or...
Yes, I'll have further discussion with the administrator, probably, hopefully, on the next council agenda, we'll tackle that. It's gonna take, with turnout gear, it is custom-made for each firefighter, so you get measured and made. So the boots, gloves, and helmets are not, of course, they're just, you buy a size and you get it. So we have a little time to get that part hammered out, and hopefully on the next council agenda, we'll have quotes for the, at least the boots and helmets would probably be good. Gloves are, gloves and hoods are kind of a, I guess in lack of a better term, a shelf item for these vendors. I mean, that is something that you buy off, you know, in that respect, but we can look into that as well, with further discussion with the administrator, so...
Good. All right, further discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
A vote yes, motion is carried, and the low quote of Grand Forks Fire Equipment for not to exceed $59,000 is approved. Thank you. Consent agenda, and a request to allow necessary expenses for Kelly Myers, the building and zoning official, to attend the GTS 2017 land use training and education sessions in June and July, one day each month. Motion by Counsel Jacksaw to approve the consent agenda. Second by Counsel Pearson. Question?
Aye.
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 A vote yes, motion is carried, consent agenda is approved. Thank you. We'll move to new business, and review of the code of ordinances, section 8-5, muffler on motor vehicle, truck, motorcycle, snowmobile, or all-terrain vehicle. This is just for council information, and I bring it forth, Counsel Drowe pointed this out at a public works committee meeting. And I guess the question here is, maybe to the city attorney and to the chief of police, does this give the officers and the city attorney the necessary guidance for making citations with regard to noise? Or do we need a ordinance that would specifically speak to noise, and we would take out the truck issue, and just go to vehicles in the city that have illegal or mufflers that are not proper?
Please. I would, I mean, this current ordinance doesn't mention noise at all. I mean, it may imply that that's the reason for it, but I would think that, I think that this ordinance, state law statutes that have restrictions, and I think that's probably typically what an officer would, in, I think it's not uncommon, that we have, think, ordinance that are also violating... The ones that I have seen in court over the years have been state law. I don't recall ever seeing a ticket.
Be vague, yes? All right, so I will propose a noise ordinance to the chief of police and the city attorney to review and something for consideration. Okay. Further discussion from the council? Thank you. Move to item two under new business, and that's to accept the donation of $3,000 from Packaging Corporation of America Safety Committee for playground enhancements. Motion to do that?
Sure, I'll move that.
Motion by Councilor Briggs. Second by Councilor Pearson, to accept the donation of $3,000 from Packaging Corporation of America Safety Committee.
And direct a letter from the mayor thanking them.
And a letter from the mayor thanking them. Further questions or discussion? Question? Well, yes, motion is carried. Donation is accepted. Thank you. Item number three is appointment of Brian D. Franco as part-time police officer as recommended from the Police Civil Service Commission. Chief?
I have aligned to the letter that we had our oral board to maintain the police commission. Franco is one of the candidates, and he placed very well. He's currently a part-time sheriff, and he does a good job for them, and I'd like to put him on part-time with our department. I think he'd be a good reason.
It's council's pleasure with the appointment of Brian Franco as a part-time police officer.
I'll move.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve, second by Councilor Pearson. Question on the motion or the appointment? Question? Well, yes, motion is carried. Appointment is approved of Brian Franco. Thank you. Item number four is to approve the volunteer paid-on-call firefighter roster as presented by the Fire Civil Service Commission, and approve the hiring of the top seven with an effective date of June 1, 2017. And those firefighter and chief, do you want to speak to this? The applicants, I'll let you go through them.
Per the civil service rules for the fire department, we do have to keep a roster in place. Our roster had expired, and it's good for two years of eligibility. So on the 17th and 18th of May, we did entrance exam to create that roster. We had 13 applicants. They all got ranked by the civil service and how they finished or did through their entrance exam. It was a three-part exam that included an oral, a written, and a physical test. With the civil service rules, we're down to 25 firefighters. We can go up to 32 if we anticipate retirements. I do have one confirmed retirement going to happen this year, so we're looking to go up to 32. So that would be the top seven being placed on. The individuals that are beyond number seven on the roster stay on that roster for the next two years, so if there is openings again, that would follow in that descending order on how they placed. So they are still eligible for the next two years. The civil service has approved the roster, and it has been posted in the fire hall, and from the roster, the top seven applicants are Tanner Bombinger, Chris Hybal, John Sloan, Adam Hanson, Mike Geddy, Adrian Luce, and Bill Bacon. And as mentioned in the proposal, I am asking that their appointments be effective June 1, for clerical reasons on our fire department's side, for paperwork reasons, and the test was administered in the end of May, and the civil service did approve this roster on the 23rd. So again, just respectfully asking that June 1 be their appointment date.
It's council's pleasure with the approval of the volunteer on-call firefighter roster.
I would move on the volunteer firefighter roster with the...
Motion by Councilor Droba? Second by Councilor Pearson. Questions for the chief or questions, discussion with regard to the motion or the roster? All of these will be active firefighters upon this approval?
Correct. We did do our normal background stuff through the police department. Everybody's good to go, so I guess after this meeting, we'll be making some phone calls.
And all of these individuals meet the requirement for being able to respond, response time?
They do.
They do. Okay, very good. Further questions or discussion? Question? Well, yes, motion is carried, and the firefighter roster is approved. Thank you. Item number five under new business is to approve Tom and Ruby Radford as camp hosts for the City Beach for 2017. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We feel fortunate, as we had, I had indicated in email correspondence to the council, is that the person that we had set up to be camp host at City Beach had, for the months of July and August, had indicated that she could not find somebody to take her position, and so she recommended that we try and find somebody. And we did not have anybody for the Memorial Day weekend in the month of June, so we feel fortunate that both Tom and Ruby Radford had called and asked if there was any opportunities to work as camp hosts, and we said absolutely. So they came in this afternoon and are parked out there, so hopefully we'll get council approval. And again, we feel fortunate to have them because they did work out at City Beach in both 2013 and 2014. So they've got some experience and a learning curve, and we're hoping the council can approve them as, to volunteer out there.
Council's pleasure with approving the Radfords as camp hosts.
I would move.
Motion by Councilor Briggs.
I'll second, if I did too.
Second by Councilor Jacksaw to approve Tom and Ruby Radford as camp host at City Beach. Discussion? Question? Well, yes, motion is carried, and the approval is given. Thank you. Item number seven under the new business is to approve the contract for service with Premier Pyrotechnic to provide Icebox Days and Arrowhead 135 Race fireworks for $2,000 payable in 2018 from the Fire Department General Supplies. Motion by Councilor Briggs and second by Councilor Jacksaw. Discussion on the motion to purchase the fireworks.
So this doesn't include our 4th of July for the following year?
No, that will be coming up later this year, purchase for July 4.
Yeah, for clarity, what they wanted to do was in years past when we bought the Icebox Days fireworks, I've had to drive, had to pick up a very limited boxes for Icebox Days, so what they've allowed us to do is sign our contract now for Icebox Days, then they ship it to us. This contract is up right now. Got a contract in place to purchase them.
Essentially, we're still getting, physically getting everything at the same time.
Correct.
Question? Further discussion?
I would just offer that perhaps when we visit with them for next year, is we can just get one contract to outline the different timeframes that we would get them, or be using them, but still get them all at once and pay just once with one contract instead of having duplicate contracts.
That would be at the end of this year. Further discussion? Question? Well, yes, motion is carried, and the contract for fireworks is approved. Thank you. Item number eight under new business is to approve the service-level agreement for administration of revenue recapture with the Minnesota Department of Revenue, authorizing mayor, motion by Councilor Jacksaw? Second by Councilor Briggs. Discussion?
This is a new, we haven't approved this in the past. I think this is a new procedure we're implementing, correct?
The difference, as I understand it, is that this year, or that the regulations do not allow a third party to process these.
Oh, okay.
We have to do it, and so in the past, we've used Expert T billing, and now we have to do this. And I did, you know, you can see that the cover pages dated May 19th. That was after our second council meeting in May, and they needed by, they needed it by the second, so they didn't give us a lot of time to work with this. But both Betty and Chief Manasa have gone through the training and are authorized to process in the revenue recapture program through their system, so we've already conducted the training.
Last time we talked about the state and the ambulance department was the provider tax. Any legislative help there?
My understanding and checking with our staff is that that wasn't going to be pursued by the Minnesota Ambulance Association any further. The law is scheduled to sunset in 2019, so they weren't going to do anything else with reducing that tax. I was a little bit disappointed to hear that, but part of the reason was is they didn't know how they're going to make up the revenue shortfall without those funds coming in further. Chief might have additional information, but that's what I understood from our representative.
And we're including that tax on the collections that we're making?
We have to make quarterly payments for that, and it's, I believe it was a 2% tax. I don't recall this, are making payment to the state for that.
Are we collecting?
In our billing fees.
And that has not changed.
That has not changed?
I thought we changed it to add into the billing last year.
I'm not sure that we could specifically list it separately, because if you did, they just, the insurance companies would refuse to make payment on it. That was the information.
You increased our fees by 2% though, didn't we? Correct me if I'm wrong, wasn't there like state legislature, or legislation that was going to try to exempt Minnesota?
I thought so too, yeah.
No, they didn't follow through with that, and they agreed to defer it and bring it up in the next session, which was a session that just expired, and when I checked with people in our department that were aware of that, they said that the position of the Minnesota Ambulance, or the Ambulance Association was that they didn't, if any likelihood that it would get approved because of the agency.
Great. Further with regard to the discussion on the motion to approve the service-level agreement with the Department of Revenue for the state of Minnesota? Question? Well, yes, motion is carried, and agreement is approved. Thank you. Item number nine is the, one of the new additions to the agenda, and that's to adopt a resolution approving the new Bureau of Criminal Apprehension Master Joint Powers Agreement and Court Data Services Subscriber Amendment to the CJNDN Subscriber Agreement. That's a lawful, chief, any comments on that?
I believe this is just added in place for years, and it's past due, and access the access to the necessary data we need.
It's council's pleasure. Motion by Councilor Briggs to approve. Second by Councilor Pearson. Question on the resolution or the agreements? Question? Well, yes, motion is carried, resolution is adopted, and the approving the agreements for both the joint powers and the control data, court data services. Thank you. Item number 10 is also in addition to the agenda, and that's to approve the Icebox of the Nation sponsorship and trademark license agreement with Williamson-Dickey Manufacturing Company.
Super excited, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Councilor Droba, second by Councilor Briggs. City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor, I just think that this is a unique agreement, and as it indicates, this will allow the Icebox of the Nation trademark to be used by Walz Outdoor Apparel, and they're excited to be able to market their outdoor wear with the Icebox of the Nation trademark. They think that they'll be able to market it better, and what we get in return for the use of our trademark is we'll have 100 employees outfitted with bibs, outdoor jackets, vests, and that type of apparel that we can use through the year 2025. So we see it as a win-win, and they, we have to further explore this, but they might even do some of their marketing efforts directly here in International Falls, and I think if it's an opportunity for us to market the city and our region, that's a good thing, and it would be on a national basis. So I'm hoping that we can work through some of those details with them, and that's something that can happen. But it's being recommended in this draft agreement. I would commend the city attorney, who's worked on making some revisions, which are shown on this particular version of the agreement, and it's also had some review by the League of Minnesota Cities Attorney, and I think he indicated that this was unusual for them to have to review something like this, because obviously there's not a lot of cities with trademarks, so it was something that...
Well, thank you to the city administrator and city attorney for this good work. I know the one, one call I was on with the city administrator, they said that they would like to start their advertising campaign by September of 2017, but the workwear that they have is being worn in the city of International Falls, so Icebox of the Nation, so very, very good.
I'm just curious about this. Number one, you know, I probably will vote BS for this, I think, but if you look at the Voyage Forward Consultants' report, they say we should lose the Icebox Nation logo, that it's detrimental to us. So I don't know if we should be promoting it. On the other hand, if we get free clothing for our staff, that's a financial boon. Secondly, I'm not too sure I understand the business plan of this company. Do they, are they planning on, you know, do they plan on pushing trademarks on cities so that they can find a niche market to market their clothing? Or what, what do they do here? Why are they doing this?
I have to assume it's like any business, that they're, they're in, they outfit cold weather clothing. If they can say that their clothing can be worn in the Icebox of the Nation, and people, we're known for being cold, then it's going to cause other people to be like, well, if it makes it there, I'd like to buy that because I don't want to be cold. You know, I mean, that's essentially what the marketing...
That's the marketing pitch. Okay, got it. Now I get it. Thank you. And then, secondly, in no way is this an exclusive license. Other people can still continue to use that, because the Chamber markets their sweatshirt.
It's exclusive with regard to similar clothing items, but it doesn't...
Won't be impacted.
I don't believe it would be.
All right, well, you know, then the question comes down in my mind to my vote, is this something we want to promote or not, based on the Voyage Forward recommendation?
Well, I would certainly respond that we're building a third cold box, and we have contracts with many companies... have contracts with, with many companies coming here. They, they do fill up our hotels and motels at a time of year when there are not many visitors interested in coming here. So, I think cold weather and certainly is one of the things that International Falls is synonymous with, so it has value, as we can see.
I may just add to that. I, I agree with it, and one of the things that I've often thought is that, one of the things that the Icebox of the Nation's marketing misses sometimes is, we, we think of Icebox of the Nation, we immediately go cold. Well, we could do an entire marketing campaign of what the Icebox of the Nation looks like in the spring, what the Icebox of the Nation looks like in the summer. You can still brand that, because the icebox is cooler in the summer than it is in Arizona. The icebox is cooler than it is in Florida, you know, so you could still market that brand of the icebox in the summer at 70 degrees, showing what it looks like. So, I think that this makes sense. I don't know if long-term, I think we should be the Icebox of the Nation, but I think it definitely makes sense here, and we're not trying to bring back something that we haven't given up already. So, I think it makes sense today.
And I'm, you know, I'm no marketing, great marketing mind at all, so I'll defer to your opinions. I'm just recalling that, that's what our consultant that we paid half a million to recommended.
Further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and the agreement is approved. Thank you. Further under due business? That will move to the reports of boards, committees, and department heads. City Administrator.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to mention that the Budget and Finance Committee had set up a meeting. We'll be meeting at 3:00 on June 19th, and the purpose of that meeting will be to have a phone conference with the auditors to go over the audit for the calendar year 2016. So, you want to mark your calendars for 3:00 on June 19th to do that. I did also want to just bring up that the comprehensive plan work that's being done by the Community Design Group in Minneapolis, I received a draft version today of their summary of the community engagement efforts that they undertook, and then also the draft of the vision and value statements. I have a conference call or a phone call set up with them tomorrow morning at 9:00 to go over that. Haven't had an opportunity to review it, they just sent it today, but so, we're proceeding with that, and I'll keep the council advised about what the next steps are.
And we have this request...
Yes.
From the administrative office to hire a part-time seasonal employee, given that our finance officer is leaving. Council's pleasure with that request.
Promoted.
Motion by Councilor Jacksaw to approve the part-time seasonal employee, Casey Myers, for the administrative office.
Second.
Second by Councilor Briggs. Question on the motion or the hiring?
How long do you anticipate it will be before we have a finance officer?
We're taking proposals, or actually, applications through the 26th or the 27th, I can't remember the exact date, but I would like to have somebody start it as soon as two months. I would, just let the council know, I did research using a recruiter to try and perhaps broaden our exposure and potentially through a more assertive or proactive recruiting effort, try and get more people, but the, I found the cost to be prohibitive, and I thought it made more sense, and so in my casual conversations with the mayor, that we just proceed to try and hire ourselves, and if we're not successful, if we don't attract the type of candidates that we think we need for the position, we can always still fall back on, on using a recruitment firm to us. I'd like to get somebody on board, but somebody local, I'm confident we could have somebody on board within two months.
Further discussion?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes, motion is carried, and the part-time seasonal employee for the administrative office is approved.
How many applica, sorry, Mr. Mayor, can I follow, how many applications have we received so far?
I don't know.
Oh, okay.
On Friday, so.
Also, the answer is...
Last time we advertised, I think we received eight applications and interviewed five candidates, so.
Further, city administrator?
Nothing for me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney?
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing special to report.
Thank you. Chief of Police Mastin?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've included my activity report for you guys, and on there, you'll see that the officers were busy this month with various things, recent bike rodeo items there. Our calls for service, we had 384 calls for service, 95 traffic stops, 31 medical assists, all arrests, and we generated 87 reports. Not the same as last year, this times.
Questions for Chief Mastin? A lot of activity went on, very busy month. I guess the one question I, the fourth bullet down, Officer DeBenn attended a defensive tactics PPCT. I'm not familiar.
He's our defensive tactics instructor, it's mandatory training. He had to go ahead and ask me some question point control tactics.
Thank you.
And he's our instructor, and he had to go back and re-certification.
Very good. All right. Further questions of Chief Mastin? Thank you for the report. Chief Manasa?
Mayor. Monthly report for May for the, for the fire and ambulance, we had three department call-outs on the fireside. One was a city response, two rurals, both of the rural responses were grass fires. We had our monthly meeting on the 18th, and we did the new firefighter testing that we talked about, and had a regular business meeting. For the ambulance, we did the meeting and training on the 10th of May with a regular business meeting and bleeding and shock as a training. Runs for May, 71 911s, 50 transfers, for a total of 121, compared to last year at this time was 82 and 47, for a total of 129, so down just a couple. And our total runs for the year so far is 594. Housing, I'm not going to go through each individual thing. The end of May, we had total 25 tags, compared to 16, we had 52. I guess just for comparison, that probably doesn't look very good, but the day of June 1st, we did another 25 or 26, so we're right in with what we did at this time last year. So, I think a little clarification is probably needed there.
It would be, look good if you didn't have any, actually. It'd be funny.
Probably the same places as last year.
A lot of them are repeats that we deal with, so it's just kind of the time of the year, and with what the weather plays out on when we, especially with grass, it's a little hard when it rains for days on end, it's hard to tag somebody for long grass. So, that's how that all falls in. But like I said, just a little clarification there, we're pretty much on pace with where we're at last year as of today.
We're doing our, this council's doing their citywide pickup. I should give you a copy of that, have you received it? This will be going out in the mail. I'd like to, we're having a meeting on the Tuesday of that week, so it'd be the 13th. Anyway, one of the initiatives that, that Councilor Droba brought forth at a council meeting was to coordinate with your office to see if we could help some people that have particular problems cleaning up light, and we, we could organize volunteers around that, but we need to coordinate with you. And so, do you want to come to that meeting, or do you want to meet separately at another time, at your disposal, basically?
I can do that meeting, I believe. Do you know the time on it?
Okay, it's at 4:00.
4:00?
Yeah.
I can get a list by then for some maybe target properties or areas?
We have, we have the SOS volunteering, the International Falls High School Student Council, and the International Falls Cape Group as well. So, we have three groups, plus Brian is...
Plus Brian.
Plus Brian, and we, and Brian, and of course, so there are people, we just need to organize and focus, so. And we can't do that without your insights.
We can do that.
And also, we have that particular thorny issue. I don't want to mention the names.
Please, Councilor Droba.
Chief, I happened to see something on Facebook, and it wasn't in your report, and it hasn't came up yet, but I am particularly interested in the June, or I'm sorry, July 1st, 10:00 AM kickball tournament to fund the IFFD fundraising. Can you tell me more about that?
I don't have the flyer in front of me, and I apologize for forgetting that on the monthly report. What we have done is we've, we've organized a kickball tournament, and the idea is the sponsorship or the buy-in for the tournament is a fundraising goal, so it goes along with our pancake feed in our movie in the park. So, we're going to try and raise money, we're going to give this a try, we're going to try and do a kickball tournament, raise some money. Money's raised, I don't remember, recall if I talked about this last month at the council meeting, but we bought an AED that went into Super 1, and then PCA donated one, they bought three, and they donated one to us for, we placed out at Thunderbird, so we have to do a media campaign on that yet, or I promised Lori we would do a media campaign on that that we haven't done yet, so I didn't do too much advertising on that. But that's kind of what we do with our fundraising, and then we've also started a scholarship. Because it's through the fire, we've kind of, we've done the priority to anybody going into EMS or fire, but we'll also go for anybody for law enforcement or that kind of thing as well, so. But, so we're doing, I believe it was three $500 scholarships a year for somebody going into those fields, nursing was included in that, and...
Nursing was?
Yeah, I believe it was, yes. Again, I don't have the info in front of me, but I believe it was. We were a little late this year to get in on the awards banquet on the scholarship side that they held at the Elks. We were getting some of our stuff finalized and in place, so next year, we will be a part of that. So, that's what we're doing with our, what we're trying to do with our fundraising is AEDs in the community, fund that scholarship, and then the third side of that is the donations to Relay for Life, Community Cancer Walk, different organizations like that. So, that's where this kickball tournament comes into, and it's just hopefully another stream that we can use and draw off of, so hopefully, it's a success.
I'm 85% certain I have a team, and it's all power, we're slow, but we have a lot of power.
Thank you for bringing that up, actually, I'm kind of embarrassed I forgot about that, but we will be getting flyers out on that, and it was on our Facebook page, so hopefully, we get a good turnout with that, maybe we can get a team from departments.
Mayor Anderson said you'd be on my team, but I don't know if we want to. We're going for power.
I'll just coach you.
There you go.
All right. Further questions for Chief Manasa? I just have one, and that's under the housing area. Chief, I've had calls on two facilities or two yards that have garbage bags piled up, and I know that you're familiar with at least one or maybe both of them. Where would they fit under these categories that you have here?
They would fit under the junk category.
Junk, okay.
So, that was the, the loose term, yeah, for garbage or debris in a yard, that's what that would fall under.
And now, I know that at least one of the structures or the yards is a rental unit, and I believe that the ordinance does allow for the city to have rental units require them to have garbage pickup? Is that the case, or is that not the case yet?
We wanted to, and then upon discussion with the landlords, we changed it so that, as I recall, and I think you were here at the time, city administrator, that we decided that we would let them provide the garbage service to the landlords, but then if they failed to, then the, we would step in.
And I don't want to paint all landlords with the same brush, because I, there's a lot of good landlords that, that have good requirements, but...
Which is why I think we decided that we would give them the leeway to do their own.
When someone has 30 bags of garbage piled up at the back of the house, or back of the, the building there, I think it's, it's gone beyond, and this time of year, with the heat, the things are going to start getting very...
Well, and myself and Kelly, I think we'd like to have a little conversation on that, that, that particular building you're speaking of, I know well. It's bothered me for a couple of weeks now, and we've done the normal procedure of tagging it with a 10-day notice, sent a letter out that gives them another 10 days. I guess maybe that falls into a sense of urgency that we're not completing with, and of course, the neighborhood or the neighbors and people that see that are questioning why we're not doing anything while we're in our process right now, so maybe we, unaware of if we can force that along any quicker, I'm not sure on that.
I think if we give them the proper notice, I don't know that we can, that we can take and call it an emergency, but, but it certainly is, if somebody has garbage piled up outside their door for over a week, it seems to me it's an issue.
Yeah, and I guess all I'm, all I'm saying is, we are treating that as we would any other property, it probably just looks a little worse that we're maybe neglecting it, and we're not, it's, we're following the...
Due process, right.
Correct.
Just, we should maybe shorten up our process time.
I think that may be worthwhile.
Well, we... Process that we have adopted, argue if we tried to prosecute... At some point, it becomes a health hazard.
Have a health officer that should be involved, maybe.
If particularly, you know, that much garbage could be attracting rats or whatever.
So, when you say that we could give a citation, is that an administrative fine, or is that...
Well, that'd be criminal. And when we do that, we always have the latitude, okay, yeah, our criminal process. The thing we can do so that we don't have repeat... Convict them, don't drop it and convict them, then for... Had to have a similar incident.
The question is, under what circumstances can we start that, and so it has to be a health hazard?
Well, you know, I think...
I'm vague as to what those circumstances would be, but...
It's whatever I can convince the judge.
Oh, I see, I see, okay. I didn't mean to tip your hat here, I'm sorry.
I have pictures in my office, so I'd be happy to share them with you, so. Appreciate your good work on that. Further questions for Chief Manasa? Thank you for your good report. Reports to the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to give an update to the council about the citywide garbage pickup. You each got a flyer. That is going out in the mail on Thursday of next week, and it'll be on harder, it'll be on heavier paper than this, into everybody's mailbox in the city. And we have three organizations that have, that will be bringing volunteers, the Servants of Shelter, the International Falls High School Student Council, and... of Shelter, the International Falls High School Student Council, and then the International Falls Cape Group. And as well, we have a number of counselors volunteering, including Brian. Thank you, Brian. And of course, Wade Friend is, we couldn't do this without Friends, because, you know, they're donating their time and their equipment. And also Levi Pearson, Brian Nelson for Brush, I think he's going to be there. You know, and members of our committee will be volunteering as well, their time on that morning from about 7:30 to noon. So thank you.
Thank you. I think it's a great effort. The one question I have is the category that says free collection site for city residents for the following items, and does that mean that they bring it to the high school, that that's what they're required to do?
They're required.
Okay.
If they need pickup, and we offer that through our volunteers, they need to, because we need to be able to plan for manpower on that. There's an email or a phone number they need to call, and otherwise they don't get pickup. And I think that should be clear here, I hope, you know. We don't want them dropping stuff. And they are allowed to put their white goods on the curb, provided they let us know, so the city crew will pick that up, on a weekday, actually. So we're not paying overtime.
Very good. Further questions?
Point out, we do have that, the city administrator already brought it up, but we do have a budget and finance meeting before our next city council meeting at 3:00.
Further from the council? The only item I would just, from my mayor's report that I would just bring to your attention is that the, with the North Cooch Sanitary District, the resolution that had presented at the last meeting was turned down by the North Cooch Ching Area Sanitary District Board, and further that the Sanitary District Board is considering increasing the hours, which would have a fairly significant cost to the city sewer rate payers. And so I just wanted to bring those two items to your attention.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
I, we have a number of questions there regarding their cost structure, and I would recommend that some funds be expended to analyze that cost structure. And that would go to your question regarding whether the contract with East Cooch is fully compensatory to the North Cooch Sewer District. But beyond that, you know, we talked about, in the past, we've talked about the fact that the billing stipulation in the enabling legislation has no recognition of fixed cost. And that is a detriment to the city rate payers, because we have paid 90% of the cost, but we have 75% of the connections. And so that is where that fixed cost works to our, we're paying more than fair, right? And so in order to get at that, we need to have an analysis of the fixed and variable costs, and that would also address the analytical needs we have regarding the East Cooch. And I think that any responsible member of any board should be willing to look at the facts.
And so, in budget session this year, we should look to do that, or are you asking the North Cooch Board to...
The North Cooch Board should do that.
Should take and do an analysis of the costs?
Right. And we have a majority of the representatives on that board, so I would expect them to.
Well, I expected them to also, but...
Who do I call? Who's, who do we need to contact to put pressure on?
Well, we can...
Talk with the mayor outside of the committee, and that would be my legal advice, yes. Am I correct in the way that that, I haven't seen it on KCTV, but it was my understanding that your motion to have East Cooch have...
Adopt the resolution?
Yeah, adopt that resolution. I believe that's coming back up, though, is it not? Is it not on the next agenda, so?
Well, I'm going to ask it to be on the next agenda, but whether or not it will be, I don't know.
I was under the impression that it was going to be. That was my thought, my understanding, after speaking to the director, that it was going to be on the next agenda.
I will certainly request that that be the case, but I have not talked to her about that. Further questions? Okay, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience for the, anything to the attention of the council at this time? If not, you have the correspondence from the library trustees meeting, and as Councilor Drobah pointed out, that we'll meet at 3:00 as a budget and finance committee on Monday, June 19th, and then follow that at 4:30 with the regular city council meeting. Nothing further to come for the council at this time. Will stand adjourned. Thank you.